Robert?
Here.
Mr. Schindler?
Here.
Ms. Smith will not be here. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mayor Francis?
Yeah. Please join me in the last salute.
I believe in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right. Give me the report. Dr. Udon?
Yes, I'm very excited to announce that we finally have a support group for those first responders, military, policemen, firemen. We have a support group for PTSD starting at the community center. The first date of beginning will be November eighth from six thirty to eight thirty. We had a great meeting with the Ballard Clinic, the CEO and the director of the Ballard Clinic, and they would like to come in and help us, especially, you know, during this time of we're discovering more, we're bringing more awareness to those with PTSD. And we're finding more and more that people EMS, people riding the ambulance, they have a lot to contend with when they close their eyes at night. So, we're very happy to have this group. It will be the first Wednesday of every single month. So, that will be a dedicated night, so we don't have to play the schedules. The first Wednesday of every month will be on hand at Ballard Clinic with two individuals that are both military and first responders. So, they can absolutely relate to anyone going through any kind of PTSD regarding their field of work. It's not for, say, sexual trauma. It's for those in the military, fire, police, EMS, people that went through nine eleven and are struggling to this day with what they saw. So, that will be very, very helpful to the community. All are welcome. It's not just HOPACON. This Ballard Clinic covers several states. And so, since they do that, they're opening this up to Sussex County residents. So, I just wanted to let everyone know that this is a big step for us in the right direction. I also wanted to let you know about another group that we are starting. It's called Next Steps, and it's for people that are suffering with sexual trauma. We do have a specialist coming in on October third from seven to eight thirty. Her name is Erin, and she has her own testimony to tell. But again, talking about relating, Erin can relate to those that have suffered sexual betrayal or trauma. So, we invite you to come out to the community center for that. Just want to give you a reminder that on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, the center will be closed, as we are a polling location. So, with everyone voting for the school referendum, our, the community center, I don't know your district, you know your district. If we're in your district, you can vote at the community center, but it will be closed. The, I also want to bring everyone's attention to, the fall is here, and cold weather approaches quickly. So, the community center will be doing a coat drive again this winter. So, please gently use coats, hats, scarves, gloves. If you can wash it before you bring it, that would be a big help. People are, people that are in need, they often take the coats right off the rack. So, we'd like them to be clean and fresh for whoever needs a coat. And just, there's so much that I cannot say in a committee report, but I can let you know that over the summer between June first and September first, the community center has handled six cases of crises have come through. And the outcome is favorable for all six. But we are doing a lot of work behind the scenes, not anything we can include in a committee report. But people in crises are utilizing the center and making the connections to get the help that they need. So, I just wanted to keep you in the loop of that, that people are reaching out. And thank you for everyone that supports our work there. I really appreciate it. And I think that is it for now, Mayor.
Thank you. Rich?
We had a bid opening today, which is for the fire truck. And we don't have official results or anything, but we're gonna have meetings about that coming up and moving forward. But one thing on the agenda tonight is finalizing the bond ordinance for that. So, I hope everyone will vote for that and move it forward. Next, sort of some good news. You know, HOPACON is a special town, and it's a great place to live. And New Jersey Monthly actually is recognizing us. It says twelve great small towns in New Jersey. And lo and behold, one of us, one of them is HOPACON. So, up with the Highlands and mountains, lakes, and all different stuff. So, it's really nice to get some good publicity for the town, because we do live in a great, great spot.
That's it. Thank you. Kenon Yeh?
Thank you, Mayor. First recreation, this past Saturday was HOPACON Day. It went very well. It was a good crowd, a good amount of exhibits, vendors, stuff for the children, food. The Recreation Commission did a very good job organizing it. They are also currently working on basketball. There, I know they had a meeting last week with all the towns that are in the basketball league, if you want to call it that, that they participate in. I'll have more on that going forward. They are working on their next event, which is gonna be Halloween, also in Modick Park. The date has changed. It's now Sunday, October twenty-first, from twelve to three. From the environmental, they were at HOPACON Day. They did their green fair. That went very well. They had the HOPACON Garden there. They had Sussex County Mosquito Control. I'm not even sure what else they had. They do like a whole green fair. They were there, went very well. The same day, another one of their events at the senior center was the Free Shred Day for HOPACON residents. I was there for a little while. It seemed like not crowded, but a steady stream of people stopping in. So, that went well, that went well as well. This Saturday, September twenty-third, from nine to twelve, is townwide cleanup. Anybody looking to volunteer to help clean up anywhere in town, more than welcome to show up at DPW. And October twenty-first is the Fall Hike. I don't have times on it right now, but I will soon. But that's, those are their next event. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Brian Yeh?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. I want to comment on HOPACON Days. It was a great time. We had a lot of people come out last Saturday. It was a good event. Thank you for coming. And on Sunday, I was up at the Fairgrounds for Sussex County Day. The mayor and I were at the HOPACON booth, and there were thousands of people. So many people, there was a bit of a parking issue, but everybody got in, everybody got to wander around. There were a ton of vendors. A lot of fun was had. There were events, axe throwing, chopped convention. And it was really a good time, and I want to thank everybody for coming, if I saw you. Over at the Chamber of Commerce, the next event is the Young Professionals Social for those forty and under in the Chamber of Commerce, and that's September twenty-seventh over at the Wimless. Sussex County Municipal Authority, the next events are October fourteenth. The next e-waste event is on the fourteenth, and the next paper shredding is October twenty-seventh.
Thank you. Administrative report, you're up, Dave?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Start with some DPW reports. It was, they've been working on hot patch and basin repairs, repairs to the salt storage building, the salt spreader maintenance and trench restoration. On the P-Files update, the Mariner Well Plumbing is ongoing. The media that goes into the unit is on hand, and we hope to have that online by the end of September. And then testing will take place, and test results will follow that. The Phase Two paving will begin tomorrow, Thursday, September the twenty-first. Notification was made to all residents that would be affected. I'll read the list of roads. Program will begin first thing tomorrow morning and start in the Heights, and it will be obviously starting with Milling. The roads in the Heights are Unger Avenue, Leo Avenue, Grove Street, Benjamin Street, Fay Avenue, Seed Avenue, Law Street. In the Hills, Basser Trail, Tufts Trail, Lowsley Trail, Main Trail, Purdue Trail. In Elba, Wildwood, Walton Road and Dean Road, Huron Trail, Evergreen Avenue, Mohawk Avenue, Oneida Avenue, and in Northwood, Mohawk Road, Dybert Road, Oakdale Trail and Coulter Place. And finally, as the council has approved the renewal of our membership in the Morris GIF, I've been involved with some of the preparations and training. And the Mel GIF had a pre-renewal seminar a couple of days ago. One of the things that they noted is, on a national level and in New Jersey, the property insurance market is significantly at a historic rate and because of losses, most recently in the last decade, of additional climate issues as well as natural disasters. So, they are prepping members that there could be a ten percent rate increase that will be passed along, that they're seeing from the reinsurance market for property and some other areas. The Morris GIF is somewhat well positioned as compared to some of the other GIFs who have not necessarily been as conservative with some of their reserves. So, as we get closer to the final numbers that we should have in December, I'll report to the governing body. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if, just a slight correction. I believe I said the recreation Halloween was Sunday, October twenty-first. It's Sunday, October twenty-second.
Thank you.
Well, I did it wrong.
Yes.
Or I did.
All right. Now, we have proclamation, and we do have a proclamation tonight. And today is pretty, for a pretty special lady, so Pat, would you come on up? Pat Hoffman. Has had, has spent sixty years with the Women's Club. And the Women's Club has been around for sixty-five years. So, Pat had been with the... From the very beginning, almost. But Pat, very special lady. And as, was at the Women's Club today, you know. And people don't realize, they do little things like collect food. And we have so many people in HOPACON, you wouldn't believe it, who are in need. You know, they really have an issue with feeding their families. And the Women's Club collects thousands of pounds of food, probably annually. It's really important, and they deal with the West Side Methodist Church. So, if you know anybody that has an issue or needs some help, the West Side Methodist Church is very generous with their food, because the Women's Club collects it pretty good. We had an issue with the post office, though. They won't let us use it anymore. I think that's, I think that stinks, but we'll round and round with them, and of course, I...
We'll do it without them.
Well, we do it here, we do it at the... And by the way, you're welcome to come to the marketplace and collect it. If you want to, but that's up to you. But you gotta be creative.
I'll bring it up.
Yeah. And so, I have a proclamation for you. Acknowledge your sixtieth anniversary with the Women's Club. And in the New Jersey State Federation of Women's Clubs and the General Federation of Women's Clubs, whereas the strength and future of a community are reflected in the activities, successes, and accomplishments of its citizens, and whereas Pat Hoffman first began to visit family in HOPACON in nineteen forty-eight, in nineteen sixty-two, she and her husband John moved to HOPACON where they raised their two sons, John and Tim, and have resided in the same house since then. Whereas Pat worked for many years in the school cafeteria and library at HOPACON High School, along with serving as president of the high school booster club. And whereas Pat was involved with the Women's Club when the two local Women's Clubs in HOPACON merged to become the HOPACON Women's Club sixty-five years ago. And whereas a member of the HOPACON Women's Club, Pat served as club chairman for the two-year NJSSWC state project for autism. During that time, she organized a fundraiser that raised the most money for the state project among all the Women's Clubs in the state. She also served as secretary and president. After retiring from her school position, Pat was asked by Mayor Francis to serve on the Senior Advisory Committee as secretary, a position that she still holds today. You did a pretty good job of that, too. Whereas Pat's name is on the honor roll of the New Jersey State Federation of Women's Clubs. She also belongs to the Order of the Lily, a prestigious organization of the NJSSWC, which is the Women's Club, as well as belonging to HOPACON Senior Group and the Rose Society at St. Jude's Church. Now, therefore, I, Michael Francis, Mayor of the Borough of HOPACON, hereby proclaim September twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, as Pat Hoffman Day in the Borough of HOPACON. Well, when someone spends six...
Thank you, Council.
When someone spends sixty years with the same organization, there's something to be said for that durability and that faithfulness and that dedication.
It's called volunteerism.
Yes, which is very important.
Because there's people out there that don't have anybody but us.
That's right.
So, you have to help them.
So, that's why you're there. And it's a very, you know, you always hear me talk about, when we talk about our volunteers, whether it's Scout Women's Club, whatever it is.
Doesn't matter.
It's the fabric of our community. That's what weaves everything together. We might agree to disagree on different things. But when the rubber hits the road and there's a need, all volunteers always, always step up to the mark, and that's you all, too. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Smiling, not talking. Can we get one photo if you are smiling, not reading, so your mouth's not open?
You smiling?
Yeah.
Come and go home and go to bed. I got you good, son.
Thank you, Pat. All right. I'll entertain a motion to open a meeting to public for public comment.
I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor? Aye. An opportunity to give you the public for commentary. Comments are limited to one comment. There's no more than five minutes. Welcome public. Hearing?
All right, I'll go first. Rachel Rodriguez, tonight, Skyline Drive. Just one quick comment. I don't know who handles the communication between the town and the residents, but there's been some confusion, not even for tonight, regarding the time and the location change, but like town, the town litter cleanup, you know, three Nixls went out within a ten-minute period. The first two messages were missing a digit off the phone number. People had to call for information. The date was changed twice, and the last message that came out said that the litter cleanup date was actually the eighteenth. So, if we could just be a little bit more mindful of the residents' time and coordination of getting to and from meetings. I called Borough Hall today myself at twelve o'clock. They said the meeting tonight was seven o'clock at Company Three. And then a Nixle went out thirty minutes prior. So, if we could just be a little bit more mindful of the information flow, I think it'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Mayor Lewis, I'd like to see it open the PTSD workshop. I'd like to see it open to more people, because it's not only first responders that need PTSD, and it's not always from sexual assault either. So, there are the people that have had traumas in their lives that is... As a nurse, I would say, I would like to see it opened up to other people.
They only specialize with military and first responders. That's who they train, but...
Maybe we get someone else and...
Well, no, we're...
To cover everybody else.
No, we're gonna keep them.
No, I'm not saying don't keep them. I'm saying maybe we get someone else to fill in and open it up to other people.
Well, I can, I'm always on the lookout. But Ballard Clinic will be doing military and first responders.
Okay. And can I get a board of health agenda? There wasn't any in the back. Thank you.
Does anybody come up here and talk right now? I hear the list of roads that you're paving, okay? And that's not why I'm here. And I hear the list. These roads...
Did you give her your name?
Yeah, my name is Newt. T-A-N-U-T, David. I heard the list of roads that you're paving. These roads have been paved like maybe ten years ago, maybe even less. I got, I, from the end of winter, I've been trying to get potholes fixed on Sutton and Hillside, and nobody has responded up to this date. And I've been down there four times. You paved the roads, and I got big potholes on the roads. What's up with that? All summer, all spring, and I went in the fourth, and I still haven't got the potholes fixed. And that road is a disaster, Sutton. Does anybody ride down that road anymore? No response to that?
He answers questions after the public comment.
Yeah, that's my comment.
I thought HOPACON Day was very well run. I enjoyed it. And while I was there, however, I saw there were several deep cracks in the basketball court. And I would ask the council and the mayor to possibly fix it before the freezing season, because water's gonna get in there, and it's gonna cause more damage of the facility. I think it's terrific that we have a basketball court and a playground right in the center of town. Many towns, as the one I came from, they put the basketball courts as far away as they could from people, by the highways and things. So, I really appreciate our facilities, and I guess we have to maintain them. And I'm also happy to see that you're working on a skate park, which is very good also. I was just wondering, as far as the lake is concerned, I noticed that the state park was closed to swimming for probably the whole season. The Crescent Cove, it seemed like there were swimmers in there a couple of days, but then it was, it was closed to swimmers. And I'm just wondering how Princeton Associates, what they have done for the lake? Because I spoke to someone who is a member of the mul, of the Lake Mulholland, and they still have swimming there, and Princeton Associates is working, works on their lake also. And also, whether, are we, are we harvesting weeds this year, or we're not doing that anymore? And one other thing is, when I bought my house, the instructor said, you have a radon problem. So, I had to go out and get a pump to pump the radon out of my cellar. And I'm just wondering, is this much of a problem in HOPACON? Thank you.
Good evening. My name's H.G. Davis, one twenty-six, Maxim Drive. I'm here to comment on Witten Park, which is next to the old Montney. And I'm a little disappointed that in this climate change and everything, that the whole forest park pretty much was devastated and all cut down. And that was a buffer for the carbon, all the animals that lived there from... There's a stream there with frogs, turtles, all kinds of birds, raccoons, shipmucks, nesting there. And, you know, there's two really old trees left, a three-hundred-and-fifty-year-old tree and a hundred-and-fifty-year-old tree. I'd like you guys to save it. You want to make a park there, for who? There's no parking. There's a right-of-way. Any parking that would be available there is taken up by... There's a little docked, community docking beach there, Club. And, you know, I don't know if you guys did a study, who's gonna use the beach? From where? Where's the money coming from? Who's gonna maintain it? You know, I understand they want to put some water stuff in what they call the rain park. But a rain park like at Modick Park, the stagnant water just sits there when the mosquitoes come up. I don't want the same thing by me. Bad enough, you took all the trees away. And you took some old trees. A park to me, I see some trees. Not everything devastated, cut down, and you're gonna plant new trees. It costs more money when you got three-hundred-and-fifty-year-old tree there that they want to cut down, and another one's a hundred-and-fifty, and, you know. I'd like to at least keep the trees. Where you gonna park and put parking? Well, I have no idea, but, you know, I should have known about this. As far as this notice that everybody got supposedly in the neighborhood, which the Beach Club and Dock that's on the other side of the park, they didn't get notified. I don't know why not, but Princeton Hydro's given us fifteen days to answer the letter. I got the letter about seven days ago. You know, I feel we should have more than fifteen days for the local community to, you know, have a discussion and come up with some kind of decision or something. Then nobody really was notified about what the county and the town is gonna do. You know, I don't even know what this drawing represents. It looks like a big sewer basin with concrete. Doesn't look like a rain park to me. And I hope you can do something about it. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Welcome. Hearing on? Pretty crack. I'll second. Aye, we're back.
Really closing it down now.
So, Newt, the, I'll make sure that our superintendent pays attention to Sutton and Hillside on the potholes.
I got washed, I got washed out in the springtime with all the rain. You ripped the cord down on top. You know, and nobody's come, and I've talked to Pat many a times.
I haven't talked to him yet.
And I had no response yet.
Okay. The basketball court is scheduled to be repaired, probably. If not, during the winter, early spring. That's the one at Modick Park. As far as the state park, that's a state issue when it comes to swimming. We have nothing, absolutely nothing to do with that, absolutely nothing. That's the decision with the DEP, and we don't, they have their own way of doing things.
My guards.
Yes, yes, they have issues. Yes, we are harvesting weeds. We've been harvesting weeds all summer. Harvesters have been out there. Radon, wherever you have bedrock, you probably have radon. And if your house is built on bedrock, you'd be well advised to survey. You buy a little kit to do that, and that's very common, not just in HOPACON, but probably all over Sussex County, wherever there's deep bedrock granite like we have. It's very common. I sure would like to know who cut the trees down in Witten Park. I had deep up here. We had investigation. I had the prosecutor up here. If I knew who cut them down, we'll prosecute them.
I know who cut them down.
That was not the town.
But I, I know it wasn't the town.
So, we had an investigator up there.
Give a name if you want some names. All right? But I, I lived there. I, I'm Italian.
Call me, we'll call you.
So, I know anything that goes on around the neighborhood.
Good. We'll call you.
All right, I will.
And so, and so, you know, when we do this, you have to be prepared to testify.
No problem.
So, yeah. And then, last year, someone sprayed some weed killer on it and killed everything. It was terrible.
That's one of the guys.
But it comes, it was...
It walked around the whole park and spooked the whole park.
That's right. And so, that project...
We have pictures of that.
The Witten Park project is a stormwater control project. What's gonna happen is that there's a couple of really big pipes that come in there, one on each end.
Yeah, I know where they are.
And the pipe where the Mark and Eat used to be, that washes all across and it filled with gravel. So, what they're gonna do is they're gonna build three retention ponds on the far end, and they're gonna run the water into that, take the solids out, and also if there's any issue with salt.
Am I, am I gonna see these big concrete pipes above the ground, or are they gonna bury them?
They're not above the ground. You're gonna see three retention ponds that are stepped down.
Yeah, but I just don't want them trees cut down. There's only two trees left there out of nice.
We don't intend to, and we did not.
I know what we can, can, a couple of dead trees.
If we do anything with that park, when we do something with that park, I'd like to be able to come down that right-of-way, the fire lane, and park it and angle it.
It's not a fire lane. It's a, it's a right-of-way.
Yes, I understand that.
It's in my deed.
And it, your deeds have, gives you ingress and egress.
Excuse me?
Your deed gives you ingress and egress. It doesn't give you ownership of that property.
It doesn't give me ownership, but it doesn't give anybody a right to go down there.
That's right. That's right. But anyhow, we, so that, so you know that, we're gonna pay attention to what that looks like, too. And so, I'm talking to Rutgers now. They're involved, and we'd probably, if I could get better control, we'd like to plant some trees in there with the, with the...
Thank you, thank you, you've been doing a good job at that.
So we'll, we'll certainly look into that, but that's not gonna be something that's done haphazardly. It's done through the county engineer, through our engineer, along with the Lake of Patcon Commission. It was really, the Lake of Patcon Commission is really the driving force behind that whole plan for stormwater control, and that's to protect the lake. It takes out the solids, so that area of the lake won't have so many solids in it. And so that's a stormwater management project. That's what that is. It's not a garden or not, anything like that. It's really, that's really what it is.
When I see you, we arrange everything, you know what I mean? You see that there, you know, if you know the picture, I don't have to play that to you.
Engineers have a plan, so. So I hope that helps a little bit. Now we are at...
Excuse me, can I get back to that, on this, that you sent us? It shows the two trees that they're gonna take down, the old trees from Lake of Patcon. Do you wanna see it?
That's Lake Patcon Commission, not us.
This is Lake Patcon Commission?
Yeah.
Came from a Patcon.
Well, they go through us. But the project is funded by the commission.
Who's in charge of that? Where is it located?
They have meeting, they're meeting there at the...
At the old train station.
At the old train station.
And when do they meet?
Look, you'll have to look it up on their website. I don't know their schedule. They usually meet at least once a month.
Yeah. And that's who's responsible for cutting the trees?
No.
Who's responsible?
We'd like to know that.
We're hoping you're gonna give us information.
The plans that we got, that they gave to everybody certified, it shows they're gonna cut those trees down and what they're gonna do.
We'll talk about that. I don't know what the final plans are with that.
Yeah, but we'll get back to it.
But there's enough with the trees, there's enough with the trees. We did not do that, we didn't intend to do that, and I will prosecute if I find out who did do it. Period.
Well, who's gonna stop them from taking the rest down?
Who's gonna stop who?
The two trees. Who's gonna stop them from taking them trees down, is what he's asking.
Oh, I don't know that that's the final decision. That's a discussion with the engineers and the, and the, I'm not gonna debate that with you, because I'm not part of the process. Bring it to the Lake of Patcon Commission. That's the proper place to do it.
That is a terrible point, you're right. Don't you have jurisdiction over that?
Yes, we do, but not when, not when we agree to a plan that's funded by the state of New Jersey, the Department of Animal Protection, and the Lake Commission. Okay? We don't manage the project, we approve.
You have the DEP approval for that?
Far as I know. That's a question you have to ask the Lake...
Can I see that certificate somewhere?
I'd show it to you if I had it. I don't have it. And right now, the conversation has to be with the Lake Commission. That's a Lake Patcon Commission project. That happened to be in our town. It's funded by them and the state. So that's where that belongs. All right. Approval minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of nine-six, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll move it.
Second.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three, one fifty-three, Bill Clinton.
Does anyone need anything removed or discussed? Not hearing or seeing any mayor, I'll move to Bill Clinton's entirety.
A second. Paul Roper.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Consent agenda? Second. Paul Roper.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Resolution twenty-twenty-three, one fifty-four, authorizing accredited interest paid for sewer account block four oh one, four oh one oh seven, lot nineteen.
So moved.
Paul Roper.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three, one fifty-five, adopting and confirming the special assessment for the Hudson Avenue sewer project.
So moved.
Second. Paul Roper.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three, one fifty-six, rejecting a bid from Calgon Carbon Corp. For GAC equipment.
So moved.
Second. Paul Roper.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three, one fifty-seven, authorizing an award for pumping service to DPS Pump Services.
So moved.
Second. Paul Roper.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three, one fifty-eight, authorizing of the award of GAC well equipment bid.
So moved.
Second. Paul Roper.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-three, one fifty-nine, authorizing a contract for the purchase of a rear loader to Whitkey sanitation equipment.
So moved.
Second. Paul Roper.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ordinance, this is introduction. Ordinance twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three, vacation of a portion of Allen Dale Road. Ordinance partially vacating a portion of Allen Dale Road right-of-way in the Borough of Patcon, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey.
Second.
Paul Roper.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ordinance to the final hearing, ordinance twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, bond ordinance, funding the acquisition of a fire truck. A bond ordinance for the Borough of Patcon, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, providing for the acquisition of various equipment by and in the Borough of Patcon in the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey. The Borough appropriating nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Therefore, the authorization, the insurance of a nine-hundred-and-two, five, nine-hundred-and-two-thousand, five-hundred-dollar bond or note of the Borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
So moved.
Hearing done?
Open to the public.
Open to the public.
My name is Rich Buckus, with the four Allen Dale Road in Patcon. So you just voted on the introduction of that? I was just curious as to why that wasn't a final, since this is now like the third time.
Because that's the process. We introduce it, then there's a period of time, then we bring it back. And then in the final, I'll open to the public for comment, just like I'm doing with the fire truck.
Okay, so that will be the next...
October fourth.
October fourth, okay. Thanks very much.
No, 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 he's talking about the previous situation.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay, I hear no comments on the bond ordinance. Would you bring it back?
Second.
All in favor? Paul Roper.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three, creating chapter one eighteen, knockbox rapid entry system. An ordinance for a Patcon, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, creating chapter one-one-eight, knockbox rapid entry system.
So moved.
Second. I'll open that to the public for any questions or comments.
Who does, Christie, tell us who that affects? Is it only new houses, or is it everybody, or...
It was, the fire marshal brought it to a request that he had received a request from the lead school as an instant case that they wanted to put a lockbox, a knockbox in place, and there was no ordinance in place to provide for that. So it would only affect new construction or improvements to commercial buildings. It is a good idea if residents that want to do it, they can do it. It would be specifications that the fire marshal would have as to the size and location and so forth. It would be included in that. It basically gives a tool readily available to the fire department if they're responding to a building that is closed, that they would have keys to access a boiler room or other areas that they would need access and quicker than not wait for responsive staff to come from a tool location.
So if it was new, regular new construction, like a house or whatever, that wanted to do it?
Commercial, no, it doesn't, it doesn't impact residential.
No, but would they, if they wanted to do it?
If they could do it, yes.
Would they be on a registry or something, with a firehouse, so that they would know that they need it?
Yeah, this would set the standards of the size and the software and methodology, and the fire marshal would have all of that in place, and I'm sure he'll have the brochure.
Thank you.
Paul Roper.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Paul Roper. I don't have much to say, except thank you all for coming. And again, we have to acknowledge our volunteers, we have a lot of them. The Women's Club's a very important one. And so let's just pay attention and appreciate all the good work they do, because, you know, sometimes the last thing in the world you wanna do is go to a meeting or go work on a project when you want to just be home, sitting down and relaxing. So it's very important work. We have another meeting with the PFOs. Getting ready to, to do some more work with the class action suit. That's, that'll probably be another few months, working on that.